Okay, I'll call this meeting to order at 6:32. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the reason we called up correspondence and visitor comments, I believe all of our visitors are for our main agenda item tonight, I would assume. See most the same names from last Tuesday, so. So we can move on to the main reason we're meeting tonight is a presentation for the sixth grade plan to bring sixth grade back or possibly bring sixth grade back to the elementary school in Swanton. So I'm not sure, would Dina, would you like to start, or?
I think Julie just had a few words and then I was going to take questions.
Absolutely. So the way we're gonna do questions and whatnot, for anybody who wasn't here at the last meeting, just raise your hand, either physically raise your hand, or there's a little icon at the bottom of your screen that says raise your hand. When I see it, I'll try to call on everybody. I'm usually pretty good about seeing all of them, so. Just, and then whenever you're not talking or anything, just hit mute, otherwise we get a lot of feedback.
And Chris, if it's okay with you, after Julie speaks, I have a couple of points because all of our sixth grade parents did receive a letter on Friday and that also went to the board. So I think our plan was pretty clearly outlined there, but I'd like to just focus on a couple of points on behalf of our teachers.
Okay, absolutely. So Julio will present first and then we'll have a little quick presentation from Dina and then we'll open it for questions.
So I just wanted to, I know that Dina sent her letter out to families and to me and to the board and I wanted to do a little context setting because I know that there are definitely questions about why we weren't doing things more quickly and why things, you know, why options weren't explored. And they were explored, but I do want to make sure that I start with the grounding of what we stated in coming back and reopening this fall. And I'm just admitting somebody to the meeting. And that is that we needed to look at a certain set of factors that were always in our mind. And that was the level of COVID-19 in the community, the stability of staffing in our schools, that new routines are effective and efficient, our ability our ability to maintain compliance with the guidance and that the Department of Health Guidance supports an increase for in-person learning, which it certainly has. And for us, I think the most important part that was a challenge for us was really around the staffing. So when we had COVID outbreaks, and I don't mean outbreaks as in a technical outbreak, but cases. And we also had staff who had illness because you can't come to school if you're sick, so we've had an increase in absenteeism to begin with. We've had less access to substitutes. Many of our subs are older and didn't want to sub in school. So Swanton in particular has been struggling with staffing. Dina was the PE teacher for, I don't know, weeks, it felt like. And I'm saying, I'm using PE as an example, but it could be any, any course, any unified arts. So we had all of those pieces on top. And we certainly had a lot of communication from families that were expressing that they didn't want school to continue. So there's always been this balance for us of every time there was a case, we would spend a lot of time with families saying, who were saying, you should just close school. Or I don't want to send my child to school. And so a lot of the communications we had been having. So it was really very good that we had this outpouring of, of communication and desire about bringing sixth grade back because I think the context and the frame of mind of the teachers and the administration in the school was really about being protective. Because I think that that was the message that they were hearing. And we were also, of course, concerned about displacing students in their programming. So there are many of those pieces, but I just wanted to make sure I clarified the context a little bit about the messages we were hearing, the concerns that we had. And the fact that everybody here wants sixth graders back, I have been pushing for sixth grade to come back. And yet, I trust and respect the teachers and the administration, and I know that they were weighing pros and cons very carefully and being respectful of the neediest of students and of each other. So I, with that, I just want to let Dina share a little overview of what her plan is and do her piece.
First of all, when we begin, I feel like we're really speaking to two different audiences tonight. I think one audience is definitely our parents of our sixth graders who are their child's best advocate. And that's, I think, the reason why we are having this meeting because of the care and concern towards those students. As a school board, I'd love to give you the bigger picture because school boards, I think, need to know the steps that their schools are taking to be able to meet these, these directions. So I'm just gonna kind of encompass what has been happening since we last met last week. We did send a letter home to all sixth grade parents and as I said, the board received that as well. On Wednesday, I met with the sixth grade team most of the afternoon and we came up with a plan to bring sixth grade back. Those teachers wanted to start Monday, as in this week, Monday, because there was some concerns on the part of our families about our streaming for new learning. So we, that's what we were gonna do this week. However, when we made that decision or when we wanted to jump into it, it displaced far too many people to be able to get an opportunity to get it together for Monday. But that was the kind of enthusiasm that the teachers were looking at. So we sent a letter home and we let parents know that we were still following our guidelines and that safety for our sixth grade students and for our staff has always been at the foundation of this. What we were able to do, starting next week, is to invite them back on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Those students will be coming back with their desk between three and a half to six feet apart. They will be in desk. As we had stated before, we can't fit nineteen of them in one classroom. So what we did, very briefly, if anyone is familiar with our school, Christine and Jen were in adjoining classrooms that have not been really used for that purpose for many, many years. Within that adjoining classroom or side by side, there is a huge wall. The decision was made that we would open up that wall to make it one classroom and spread Christine's kids out into both areas with the door wide open. We also decided to do that with Jen Mitchell's class, which is another set of adjoining classrooms. In order to do that, we had to move our guidance counselor, three interventionists, and our SLP. So that's why we didn't move as quickly because we were asking a lot of those people to pack up, especially because we didn't have a location for them to go. It was their space, it was where they were servicing students, our intervention kids. Our SLP was working with students there and Katie Thompson, our guidance counselor, was able to have class in her classroom when the numbers were small. So in the meantime, we moved the three interventionist out into the community room. Katie Thompson is now in the conference room in the office. And Karen Tavlin, our SLP, is now in a small office off the library. So they all have space. And on Friday afternoon, instead of going to our data day, those teachers worked on moving things. Sixth grade team will be doing all of their data work tomorrow, but we felt that it was important to get things done on Friday. When we did that, we set up the rooms, as I said. And the only trouble was we only have two rooms like that. So Kirsten Bellrose is going to be using the room next to her, which is empty at this time. That's Jen Heinz's old space, old space, her classroom previously while she was here. So Kirsten has half of her group in her former classroom, her original classroom, and the other half in Jen's. Teaching in the doorway is not really an option for her. So she has been working on how that's gonna work out. We're working with Josh once again on the technology in all three of the rooms so that things can be streamed. We have chosen to move a paraprofessional into Kirsten's team to be there full-time because as much as we trust our sixth graders, we don't think it's really fair to leave one group alone. Although Kirsten's really proud of, of her kids. I need to make it really clear that the paraprofessionals are not responsible for teaching your child. That's been one of the issues all along. That would have been easy to do. Or, you know, have teachers move and kind of pop in the classroom every once in a while. We didn't feel that was necessarily good for that community building. I think Kirsten's been thinking about what that's gonna look like. There'll always be an adult in there, but Kirsten will pretty much be popping back and forth, working with groups and trying to sustain that learning. One of the things we're hoping to do, I believe, is like when she's doing a PowerPoint presentation, to really stream it into both sides of those rooms. So the learning will be live and in place. Once again, that was done Friday afternoon. There was thirteen staff members who took part in that. And as I said, Kirsten's probably the one who's gonna have to struggle the most. And not that it's gonna be easy for Jen and Christine, but at least their kids are all in one space. We believe at this time, and in a minute, I'll be glad to let the teacher speak too, but they were really happy with the way those smaller groups, their blue and white teams have come together. So pretty much the plan is to leave them in their core groups of blue and white. That's gonna be essential because of lunch, recess, and our unified arts. Right now, we have in our hybrid schedule, kids are going to their UAs when they're in school. And that's working because we had to double the schedule. The only thing that's not working according to standard is they're not getting two PE classes a week. There's not enough room in Greg's schedule to do that, so every sixth grader is getting one PE period a week. For those unified arts classes, what the plan is to send one color at a time. So blue might go on the day that they were there, say on Monday, to music. The rationale for that is we can't fit nineteen kids in our music room or our art room. Katie Thompson will be coming into the classrooms, we think, because she too, she doesn't have a classroom now, but she can't fit the whole group in there at that time. With Greg in the gym, we are gonna work slowly on that because although he can fit them all in their space-wise, they haven't been together as that whole group yet and spacing might become an issue. And to us, the whole safety is really important for that as well. What our plan is right now is during those UA times, let me use Kirsten's class for an example. If her blue class goes to music, her white group will be in the classroom with a paraprofessional in what we're calling a study hall. It may be work that kids are making up. It could be work on things like MobiMax, which is their computer programs. It could be independent work that they don't need their teacher for. According to the master agreement and according to the fact that these teachers truly do need that planning time, I cannot ask them to be with those kids all day long. Several of them are already eating lunch with their kids every day. So at this point, we were going to try to split up lunch and recess and we can't. We were gonna have the groups go together in their smaller pods for safety, really, and for kind of recess and playing, like stuff like that and getting along. We don't have enough staff to do that. So we're going to try lunch all together in those classrooms and we're working on a structured recess plan with trying to find some more support and supervision as well outside. Originally, we wanted just the small pods. We don't have enough recess time and we just, we couldn't double. If I needed three paras to watch their classrooms for lunch, I didn't have three more to take the other half outside. So we're gonna, we're gonna work through this compromise just to see how, how that works out. Our unified arts teachers are all on board. They know the plan. Our biggest challenge now is with everybody back, and this could have happened now, it could have happened in November. Our dismissal plan has been working fairly well. We're getting pretty good at it. We're gonna have to really, really cruise a little bit because we're now gonna have fifteen to twenty more cars coming in. Our goal has always been to get the kids out as quickly as we can and especially to avoid the cars being out on Fourth Street. And that would have, as I said, that would have been an issue now or if we did it earlier. So that's the, the one thing that we are trying to, to look at. I want to back up for the board a little bit. The teachers have had two days of streaming. I think there's been some really positives there and there's been some phone calls to Josh that says, hey, come on down and give me a hand with this. But I think the teachers have been really, really impressed with their kids and how they have been responding to that as well. But that was for this week only. We were going to take next week and have them come back for those four days, as we said, and then and Wednesday would be our final remote day. I truly feel that the teachers need a time to get their act together as we're moving forward, but then after break, they would be coming back. The only other thing, and Julie alluded to this. Every single time I have sat down to write a letter about sixth grade, something has happened. Thursday, when I started the letter, we got called out to do another contact tracing. Saturday, we spent most of the day contact tracing. And I will say that it was kind of scary thinking that the crew that was working together on Friday almost were considered close contacts, which would have wiped out the entire sixth grade teaching staff. So just out of respect for the adults that are working with your kids, there's been a lot of thought put into this. And, and every time we've tried to take a couple steps forward, those type of things have happened. It's gonna be clunky a little bit at first, getting everybody back. I think the teachers have totally risen to this occasion. The interventionists, the special educators, all those people we had to move and adjust their schedules. It's just been phenomenal and, and the staff is just incredible and I appreciate that support. So any questions, whether it's from parents or from our board members, I just wanted to be clear in the next steps with that plan.
Thank you, Dina. Once again, we'll open it up to questions or comments. Once again, anybody wants to ask a question or have a comment, just raise your hand and I'll call on you. Lauren.
Yeah, it's working tonight. First of all, thank you for all of that information and for pulling this all together. I know that Julie and Dina, given what you're, you've talked about doing in the class spaces that you're changing around, that's a quick turnaround time in my mind. Particularly for the teachers. So I know the level of flexibility and just the additional transition, you know, there have been so many this year, so I can respect that that's a lot of work in a short period of time. And I know personally, having gone through multiple changes myself this year, it creates a lot of just anxiety on the part of adults. So I appreciate the work that you're doing and thank you for hearing us and for hearing parents last week. It sounds like, I guess my question, if I were to ask a question, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for all of that work and the work that you have ahead of you. I think it's important for all the kids and I know that at least one half of the twin set is really excited. The other one is, you know, I'm sure, just like the adults nervous. I guess my question is, is there a potential, I did put a suggestion in the chat about how recess could be handled, but of course, that's additional coverage. And then my, my question was about the ability for UA teachers to travel to the classroom. Teachers absolutely need their prep time. In my school, the art, music, and library folks come to the classroom and they, it is not ideal. There is a cart that they, you know, bring with them and activities they have to plan and follow along, but that is, it's a question slash slash suggestion. And then my other question is if the teachers need anything.
I'll, I'll address UA first, then I'll let the, the teachers chime in. All year long, Lauren, our UA teachers have been doing that until we were able to move forward. PE was outside and that was all when we were hybrid. Music and art, actually, music and art, as you know, with the K-1/2s, they used to come to the central building. But right now Jenny and Amy are driving their cart next door every day for K-1 and 2 and they are in the classrooms. When I spoke with both of those ladies, they're gonna see how it goes and they may make some adjustments, but they, all of them started in the classroom, so it won't be new. And I think depending on what the projects are and if they can bring it in or if they'd rather have smaller groups. So the classroom teachers have already been really flexible with that as well, too. So that's, that's a great idea and they're kind of used to it. And I just want to respect their programs and if, if there's a time when they can push in, I, I'm sure that that will work for them as well.
I'll chime in about lunch and recess. So lunch coverage, as Dina had said, has already been a bit of an issue, which is why all three of us at times are the only adult in the classroom with the students during lunch. That's not changing, especially because Kirsten has two separate spaces that need to be monitoring. She needs to have an adult in one of those spaces at all times. So usually like Tuesdays and Thursdays are my day where it's just me with the kids for lunch. So that kind of thing is already happening. So we're already kind of losing some of that time. Some of the recess ideas have already been in place before and we're looking at kind of going back to some of the zones or keeping kids just with, you know, in certain spots. They've, they've been signing up for activities to do outside, asking, you know, if they can switch their activity just to kind of keep that safety piece in place. So we're looking at bringing back some of that with the kids too. And last, you know, I guess in terms of what teachers need, I had to move my classroom. I still have stuff in Christine's in my old space. The kids have been amazing in understanding the fact that I literally have piles everywhere right now because people just picked stuff up and moved it and it was a wonder, I can't even express the gratitude I have for all of the adults that helped move our stuff. But I have piles. So I tend to like misplace stuff anyway, but what now, it's like, okay, I know I have those math papers that I had printed and ready for you. I knew where they were before, but now we're someplace else. So, you know, they've been really great about being patient and, and, you know, going with the flow. These kids are amazing in their flexibility and their perseverance with all this. So really just time, patience, as we work through this week of, you know, two more days of streaming. And, you know, as we adjust to having them all back and working through it, that these next two Wednesdays before vacation are really incredibly helpful and critical for us as we pull together to have them all back and continue to modify our spaces.
Can I just answer the question, Lauren, on your, on the teachers? Every teacher, the kids are eating in their rooms, they have been all year. And every teacher has a lunchroom monitor, whether it's a paraprofessional, me, Justina, or our lunchroom playground monitors. There are days that we, if somebody's sick, if they're out, we have asked teachers to do it. Some teachers are doing it every day because they like just being in there with their kids. When we have to ask a teacher to do that, we give them a get out of, I was gonna say jail free card, but that's not really what it is. It's a goose award and it allows them to leave a half hour earlier. The trouble with those awards are the teachers who deserve them never leave early anyway, but it's just, it's a gift of time. And I think teachers really do appreciate it.
Angela.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I, I just want to talk, if I could, just kind of make a comment. I'm, I'm a school nurse myself and I will tell you that my biggest concern with bringing these sixth graders back is that they're sort of at that age where there's this side, sort of cutoff where the transmission between these kids becomes much greater as they get bigger and they get older and they hit puberty. So I will tell you that as a school nurse, since Thursday of last week, I have quarantined like seventy-eight kids and eight staff. And I find it incredibly disruptive for everyone, not just the kids, but the adults, the parents, me as a school nurse, like all of us. It's incredibly disruptive and it's so stressful for everybody, everybody that's involved. And I think it is so important that, and I get everyone saying kiddos need to come back to school because it's good for their social, emotional health and wellbeing. But at the same time, I really have concerns that it's not so great for their, 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 their social and emotional health and wellbeing because they see the stress on their teachers' faces, on their parents' faces, and they feel the stress too. And, and, and I will say, I'm totally supportive of the school and the teachers and everything that you guys are doing to be creative. And I think the work that you're doing is so hard and there's so much pressure from all, all different sides, you know, people who don't want kids at school, people who do. But I can speak from my own personal and professional experience that I have some concerns that when my, when my child in Mrs. Bellrose's class goes back, there's a really high chance with the, the rate of community transmission right now that she could be quarantined multiple times over the next couple of months when, and when they're hybrid, you have like half that chance. So you've just, you've just increased their chance by fifty percent that they're gonna have to quarantine. Quarantine and get tested when they may not have to if, if they were in the hybrid model still. And that's, that's my only real concern because like I said, I see how disruptive this is. And unfortunately, we are in the middle of a pandemic and things are not normal right now. And they're not gonna be normal for a little while. And the more we act like it's totally normal, the more the community transmission is gonna go up because we keep saying, oh, we can keep doing all these things that we normally would and look at what's happening. It's, it's blowing up all around. It truly is. We're having tons of cases all around us. And like I said, since Thursday last week, we literally have sent home to quarantine and test like seventy-six kids and, and eight, eight staff. And it's, it's just so, it's so much, there's so much disruption in everybody's lives when, lives when this happens. So I am a little concerned as a parent and as a professional that we're gonna be faced with this. And again, it's not normal. So, you know, everybody's going through this, but, but it does concern me a little bit. And, and again, I'm totally supportive of this school and I do not want to complain about anything that we're doing because I think, I know, I can totally appreciate what everyone's going through. This is not easy. And we don't have some guidebook to tell us how to manage this, but, but, but I do, I do get a little concerned that we keep sending And we don't have some guidebook to tell us how to manage this, but, but, but I do, I do get a little concerned that we keep sending all these kids home and having to test all these poor kids and their families and everybody's quarantining and they quarantine their siblings. So they're worried about their, their kids, the kids that are close contacts. So that's, that's my biggest concern and I just wanted to express that. And, and again, I, I totally appreciate what you all are doing and how you're trying to be creative and, and solving this problem. But, but it, it is a concern of mine.
Thank you. Megan.
Thank you, Angela. I really appreciate that. I, I have questions and you kind of took part of it out of my mouth. Is that this age group is, they have said several times, this age group, it is way more transmissible. You know, whereas with the younger children, they're not seeing that peer to peer, they're not seeing that even within the households. It's like under 1% with the younger children, but once you hit 10, that they basically are much more like adults than, than the younger children. And so my question is sort of twofold. One, with the students back in, in school at least four days a week, how are they going to be separated from the younger grades? As a parent who has a fourth grader, I don't want him near a sixth grader, knowing that the transmission rate is higher. And I'm not gonna be the only parent that thinks that. I also am concerned about interactions with other teachers. My other child's teacher is quarantining, so he is now having a substitute for a minimum of a week. So I'm, and then finally, for those 78 students and staff that have had to quarantine, I know at least a couple of families where the student has been asked to quarantine, they're quarantining, they're getting tests, but then they're getting truancy letters on top of that. And I, I understand that there's part of like the state laws or are what the state laws are, some of these processes are just a pain to have to deal with simultaneously with a global pandemic. But with these students coming back in, inevitably in my mind, I see that there are a high likelihood of cases increasing and just what safeguards do we have in place to handle those when we are having students quarantining, teachers in different grades quarantining and, and just what the, the possible ramifications outside of this one grade are and to what, as best to our ability, what do we have in place to, to deal with those possible outcomes? And I'm sorry, that was a lot in, in one, one bit, but.
Those are great questions and I think the only thing I can say, I mean, Julie has been incredible and I feel like we're contact tracing constantly. And, you know, we came, we came back after break and, you know, we were saying, okay, 20 more days, we can do this. And, and it just keeps happening, Megan, and I don't, I, I, it's not school transmitted. It's just what's going on in the communities. Making those calls to parents and kids is awful. Right now, we had 16 staff out today. And everything you just said about, you know, your kids losing out or having to have subs. I do not believe, and I hope it's not our school that's sending out those truancy letters because under, working with Julie and at the admin level, we are working really hard on attendance for some of our kids because there are kids we haven't even seen for a while. And that's who we're focused on. When we know your kid has been out, asked to quarantine, I mean, there is no choice in that matter, you know, then that is, that is a difference. And I'll just follow through and make sure those letters aren't going. Right now, our, our kids are still fairly in their pods. Grade levels are not really crossing. You know, sixth grade is in the blue house. And I think the hardest thing is when we could open up those pods a little bit. You know, greenhouse has fifth grade and fourth grade. Our red house has third grade and fourth grade. So those pods are mixed a little bit more. They don't really interact if at all. They have separate lunches. They have separate recesses. They are using the same bathrooms. That's being monitored much more this year. I cannot answer about the bus. I've always, that from the beginning, you know, we kept all these kids in small little hybrid groups. But I, I mean, I don't want to open up that can of worms, but they're on the bus. Granted, they're separated and hopefully following all of those requirements, but they're on the bus with some high school kids, with sixth graders. So that, that is a concern, but I, there's no way that I can assure you of safety there. And I know you're not asking to, but within the, the building, and I think in the Babcock building, it's the same too. Justina's got them separated still for dismissal. Arrival kids are coming in. I mean, we're, we're, you know, I feel like we're drill sergeants sometime. Make sure you're spread out doing this and doing that. And the kids are awesome. But I, I think your, your questions are good.
I, I would just add that, that all of the guidance from the state hasn't changed. So we're following all of that, even with bringing back the sixth graders. It's being followed. The only thing, tricky thing with the sixth graders is exactly Angela worded it perfectly. And I think as moms of, parents of sixth graders here, you know that they are on that verge of, you know, kind of like the length or the reach of their respiratory droplet. So that's the only part that is the more challenging part. But they're great with their masks and they social distance and the teachers will, will work with them on that. And, and we just keep kind of moving forward and, and the biggest kind of indicator is what kids are bringing in from the community, certainly not purposefully. It's just what we're saying. It's, it's community spread, just by however we all are living our lives, you know, outside of the school. So I, I think that you could rest assured that in spite of the sixth graders coming back, every bit of guidance that's been handed to us from the state is still being followed.
First Carrie, then Kirsten.
Sorry, Megan, just to piggyback off real quick. I would say, just having one that's been back in school for a while and two that have not, I definitely think it's a community spread. And I have one in first grade, one in sixth grade, one in ninth grade. We were all positive in December and my first grader had the worst symptoms out of all four of us, out of all three of us, I would say I probably had it the worst. Whether it's their personal systems and how they react to this virus, it's a very, very bizarre virus. But I, just my personal experience, I don't know that with the way that they're really focused on keeping them distant, the way subscribers are really good, I would say better than first graders probably at wearing their masks and staying distant and understanding all of that. I feel really safe sending Grady back to school and having him with the support of a, of a para, you know, and then having Kirsten. I feel really, really good with the decisions and everything that's on school is going to get these kids back in school.
As, as a, as a sixth grade teacher, and I've been doing this for a really long time, about 33 years, teaching the hybrid model is probably the most exhausting experience I've ever had. So I, what I really, I can't, I really just want to be back with kids and have this all go away. But the reality is, as Angela had said, this is not gonna go away for a while. And there are, I, I just need everyone here to know that there are quite a few parents who also feel very similarly to Angela. Those are people who actually have reached out to, to us and talked to, or to me or other teachers and talked with us about it. So when, you know, I, I just want to make sure that the school board knows that the concerns that were presented, while everybody is worried about our kids and what this will do. I mean, that goes without saying. There's, there's no one who needs to tell any of us here because we're all focused on kids, what the, the ramifications are for being out of school. But the reality is there are quite a few parents who also have similar concerns. So just as you think about things and, and I, I would rather be in school and, than with my kids because it's, it's easier for me, for me. But that there are also parents who are equally concerned about the, what this is gonna mean because we are in a pandemic. And so when, when we present concerns as from all of the parents, please know that it does not represent all of the parents. There's a mix. We're a community and everybody's coming at this from different, different perspectives. So we have to keep those people in mind. We are a really huge school. We are one of the biggest K six schools in the state. So you can't compare necessarily in, or as easily, numbers and how, how quarantining and things are gonna affect one school of one size to another. Just know that, that it really is difficult. I would hate to have to go back to remote teaching. I hate that the most. That's so hard. So I'm worried about this because you need to know that, you know, kids tell all. And when they come in on the week, Monday, they're talking about sleepovers. They're talking about birthday parties with Aunt Betty and I had three Thanksgivings and we're going over to New York. And they're, they're telling it all. And I, I know that there's not a lot of mask and distance going on. I know of families personally who, everybody got it at a funeral because people for some reason think that if you're with your family, you don't need to quarantine. So those are, that's the reality also. And it, it's something that we as teachers have to think about. I have colleagues who are in their 60s. I'm very worried about them. And as we, we sit and think about the way in which these decisions were made, the kids are always at the forefront, but you need to know, and I want the school board to know, that I have never felt more supported in my life with the way in which our administration has, has looked out for us as well. You know, you can sit and say, oh, can I get you some cleaning supplies and things like that? It's not a matter of that. You as a school board have been great. Those air purifiers and things really made us feel so, so much safer. But the reality is these things are still spreading in our community. And when that happens to keep safe, we have to quarantine people and that impacts kids too. So I, I don't know, I'm a science girl. I tend to go with that. I'm hoping that, and I feel really confident actually in my students and my team that we can do this well. But the reality is, you know, this, this is now is more of a concern in, in my, my mind. And everyone just needs to be aware that there are also many parents who are worried about the emotional state of their kids, but they're also worried about what this is gonna mean for, for the, the spread in our school anyway.
Okay, there's a question in the chat from Sarah King says, is it an option for kids to join the other schools within the district? And would that help spread the kids out? Assuming that are, there are some families who might be willing to go to Highgate and/or Franklin.
I'll take that one. We actually did talk a little bit about that, especially when Dina was getting sixth graders moving in. And we were just looking around thinking, well, you know, can we put a no vacancy sign up out front? Apparently that remains something we're not allowed to do, which we knew, we knew. It's just, everybody's so right. It's just the, the most challenging of times where you're balancing conflicting needs all the time. We actually are in a place where we don't, we have just about as many kids now in Franklin and in Highgate in grade six. So there were a couple of grades where we felt like, boy, if we got another, I don't know, first grader, boy, maybe they're going to Highgate. But in terms of sixth grade, they're, they have class sizes that are, are pretty similar. So we do of course had school, have a school choice process that's set up. March 1st, we'll, we'll have the applications up and they're for the next school year. But honestly, I don't even know what that would look like in this weird COVID environment when we don't know. We can hope what we think next fall will look like, but we're not really sure. But I, yeah, I don't think, it's a really good question. We did look at it a little bit, but it really didn't help with sixth grade.
Once again, Sarah. Can't hear you. I'm not sure if you, you'd have to unmute. Oh, okay. It was an error. No problem. Any other questions or comments? Devin.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I just want to say I'm, I'm blown away by the plan that you guys have put together in such a short amount of time. And so, you know, really thank you to Dina and to, you know, all the sixth grade teachers, Jen and Kirsten and Christine that are here and Julie for facilitating this and being flexible and being willing to just really dive in and, and try to, to weigh those competing priorities that we do have. And to do it within the safety guidelines that we have, which is our best way of reducing the risk, although we all know it doesn't make it zero. So I just wanted to, you know, as a, as a board member here, thank that group. I know right from the get-go, you've all been trying to balance these things in a really difficult time and, and thinking of our students first. And it's always changing. The guidelines are changing, the priorities are changing, the, you know, the variables in terms of community spread and you know, prevalence within schools is always changing. And so I'm sure this isn't the last change we're, we're all gonna see. But just thank you all for, for being willing to put in the work and to make the, you know, make this happen. So thanks.
Christine.
I just wanted to mention that we have a vacation coming up. And I, we as a sixth grade team have a lot to do. But one of the things that keeps running through my mind is I keep thinking about Lauren asking what we need. And we just really need people to understand that we are trying really hard to keep your kids safe with the understanding that sometimes that might not seem that way to outsiders because we're really trying to keep them apart and keep them in their groups. And it doesn't feel like a good situation. I tell my kids every day, I love them because it's really, really important that they understand when they come to school that even though this is not like anything we've ever had, we still love them. So when we get ready to have this vacation and we get ready to kind of maybe put our feet up for some folks, not us, because we have a lot to do. But understand that when you come back from that, we have to take care of whatever repercussions people have made choices on. It does frighten me. I, I actually do not like to hear about my kids' weekends when they're going to Super Bowl parties and things like that. I am one of the three who did not want the kids back in school and I'll be very honest about that. I'm a science teacher. I understand viruses very well. I understand infections. I understand all of that. I try to educate the kids without frightening them because it's not my job to frighten them. But I want them to be very aware. They need to take care of themselves just as much as they need to take care of others. So I just wanted to thank everybody for the support, but just remember, we have just begun. What the decision we made is basically just another turn in the road. And so we have a lot to do. But I do thank you guys for your support so far and, and just, please just keep us in your thoughts as we keep going through this very difficult school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Luanne.
So I wasn't here last week. My apologies. So I tried to read minutes and get up to speed. I have a fifth grader and a seventh grader. So the sixth grade kind of slipped, like, like I think unless you have a sixth grade student, there, you really don't know what's happening with the sixth grade. And the differences between don't know what's happening with the sixth grade. And the differences between Swanton School and the other schools in our own SU and the other school, like, I just think it's just, it's out of our vision, so you don't see your, you know, you pay attention to what you're, what's affecting you, right? So I don't know if this came up. I tried to read the minutes. Um, but I'm wondering what, what's, what's the plan or what's being offered to students who are, um, in quarantine or need to quarantine, or if parents choose to quarantine because they feel like, maybe I didn't make a great choice, or, you know, like, maybe I was partying too hard, wasn't, wasn't my, my one, it wasn't my home, but just in general, like, what is the option or what is the plan to help support those students maybe through the next seven to fourteen days until they test out of, and, and I too, and I am in our, I'm a registered nurse. You know, I, I backfill the Department of Health. I'm vaccinating Vermonters every week. You know, like, I'm, I'm in this fight too. And I, I'm very glad I came today, because I'm, I'm, I love hearing other people's perspectives. Um, I want my kids in school. And thankfully, my fifth grader is there already, five days a week, and I'm praying that that continues. And I really wish my seventh grader was there and had the opportunity to go more, because man, the days they come home from school, even though we've had years of, like, you know, sometimes just not great weeks, not great times, there is a difference now. And I think that they really appreciate the, I think they appreciate seeing their teachers and they appreciate, even if it's not very many, you know, um, the experience that they're able to have. And I am totally impressed by the kids' abilities to step up and do what's being asked. Like, it's amazing, like, right? It's, it's us. It's the adults that are having the harder time, kind of. But, um, I guess I just, and it doesn't have to be long, or somebody can email me later, but I just am curious about, you know, these seventy-eight people, and I don't know if that's in our SU or, like, I don't, I'm not really sure what all that was about, but like, how are we supporting our students who do, and our teachers and staff who aren't able to come to school because they're in quarantine?
Let me briefly do that, because I think it's a really fair question, but I just want to jump on. Um, I think I reported to the board one night, our, um, behavioral data is really low this year. It's been amazing and it's just really exciting. And Luann, we're trying to dig a little deeper as to why. I think it's some of the constraints we're putting on kids, but I think you hit it on the head. I think a lot of our kids are really happy to be here. And, and they're excited to be here. And they're like, okay, let's do it the right way. And that's just one of my guesses, but I think, I think you said that as well. Um, I think the hardest challenge that we have is when our kids are out longer than a day or two, because for those of you who are educators, it's not like you can just send home a workbook and say, here, go ahead and do this. Um, so for, for kids right now, it's been very limited, depending on the time. We had one whole class quarantine. And in one night, they were able to work with the, um, two coaches, and they were going with their live lessons the next, not the next day, the day after. And they were out, I think, for five to seven days as an entire class. That's easy. What's not easy is when three kids are out three days, and then the next week, there's four more out. And that's where the struggle is. And you're still trying to teach, maybe hybrid, maybe remote. But I think what we've been doing is the teachers have been doing a good job. There are practice things, which is not new learning, and we get that. But through Mobi Max, through Rads Kids, there are some things they're doing with sixth grade, because so they were hybrid, some of those kids got to continue to do that. We have had some parents say, well, why can't you just do it remotely like you did before? What you don't understand is those teachers are, are not able to do it all remotely and then be teaching in person as well. So that's the biggest struggle. I think a lot of our kids are coming back and teachers are working really hard to get them caught up as best that they can. Um, and for most of our kids, it hasn't been a super long time. It's harder for our teachers sometime when they're out. A couple of them have been streaming in lately, um, doing morning meetings, but they obviously have a sub within the classroom. But I, I think for us as administrators and the teachers, that's the hardest thing when kids are out. And most of them, I mean, it's not their choices. When they get a call from the nurse and, and say, you can't be here, the, but, so that's a good question.
Is there any more questions or comments? I believe I just saw Lauren's hand.
I was typing it in the chat, because I figured other people would have more questions. Um, I was just wondering if, uh, if it would be possible for our SU to send a, a letter, just reminding families, you know, that this is still going on and we still expect you to be socially distancing, and we still expect you to skip those, um, you know, those Super Bowl parties. And if you can't, and if you, uh, and if you want your kids in school, that those are the things that you need to be doing. And if you want our community's kids in school, then those are the things that you need to be doing. Um, whether you have kids in our school district or not, um, making those choices makes those choices for everyone. And I, I hear you and I, I get you, Kristin. Um, and, and Christine, um, for a while, I was like, oh, gosh, every Monday, you know, kids would come in and tell me about their weekend. And this one had a sleepover and this one, you know, went here and this one went there. And then they had a big holiday party. Um, so it might just be time for, you know, this is also the time of year where we reteach kids classroom expectations, because they magically forget over Christmas break. Um, maybe the adults in our community need a friendly reminder or a not-so-friendly reminder that, um, that, you know, if we hold education in high esteem, as we should, and our community's kids, that you need to be doing your part. And your part might be just staying the heck home.
Yeah, we had, um, I was able to watch about ten, fifteen minutes of the governor's press conference today. And Dr. Levine specifically sort of called out Franklin County. Did you see that, Christine? Yeah. I, because there's no big reason why we're having a community. It's, you know, I mean, there's small things, you know, people have talked about different events and so forth, but, um, we're having a bit of an outbreak in our community. And it is, it is hard at this. And I will send out a reminder before the break. Um, what's tough is we went through this whole thing of, can we ask people? Can't we ask people? Then we got this letter from Dan French that said, you absolutely can't ask anyone. And you absolutely can't exclude Lauren from school, because she tells you she went to a Super Bowl party, which is the opposite of what they told us to do before. So that has been part of our, our challenge and our struggle. I've certainly had parents call me and say, you know, but it's on Facebook or it's this. And, and it's, as an educator, it's really hard, because you want to trust. As a community member, it's really hard. Um, but we have to teach, remind, prompt, and that's really the extent of what we can do. And it is, and so I have such, um, respect and empathy for our teachers who are trying really hard not to ask, how was your weekend? As their morning meeting prompt, right? And just, you know, hope and pray that people are doing the right thing and remind people. And, and you know, the fact that we clean everything, the fact that we have air purifiers, which was just the best purchase this board could have made, the fact that we have temperature screenings and routines and, you know, all of that is helping in why schools are safer than the supermarket or, you know, other, other spaces that are public. But it is something that, you know, we talk about all the time as administrators and as teachers, if it feels normal, we have to stop and think about what we're doing. Because we have to always have that slight feat, level of, of lack of comfort, because, I mean, we're getting used to our new routines and that's good. But if it feels a little too back to normal, we have to reexamine it. And we had that conversation about in-person meetings. You know, if I'm, if I'm going to meet with Dina, maybe I wanted to meet with her in person, but I'm not going to, because it's just one more opportunity to be a close contact. And so we're just, we're reexamining those kinds of things. And it's really, it's, and people are getting tired of it. And I understand completely that people are getting tired of these things. But we just have to do it, because we have to have our kids in school, our teachers and staff need to be safe, our community needs to be safe. So that's a good prompt. I will do that before vacation.
Okay, uh, Dawn, then Lauren.
Thank you, Chris, and, uh, thank you, everybody who's worked hard to put this together. I just want to respond, uh, I think Lauren's comment was right on and Julie's response. Uh, but when I heard that today, and actually I heard, uh, even for today, that we're a real hotspot. Some of my friends in other parts of the state likes to chide me about snowfall and the virus and everything else to show us we're not perfect. Uh, I, and Julie's gonna chuckle on this one, because she knows I love those message boards out there. But, uh, I think it's worth a call. Uh, most of these people tonight here are Swanton, but the Swanton Town Office or the Highgate Town Office and say, uh, how about putting something on your message board, uh, during vacation week? Uh, and let people know that it's a hotspot, you know? I'm fortunate, I'm retired. At lunchtime, my wife schedules lunch around the governor's news conference on Tuesday and Friday, all right? But a lot of people are working. And, and I just think there are a number of people in this community, I'm around Swanton a lot, that they don't know the severity. They think, oh, you know, we're doing great up here. You don't hear much. And we aren't doing great. We're doing badly, uh, even though we did great for a long while. So, you know, something that gets out, uh, to the select boards or whoever makes those decisions, I, I'd like to see a message out there saying, you know, it's a, it's a critical time in Franklin County and with kids going on vacation, uh, I, I can just see us having a wicked spike come March. So just my little, uh, just use our message board. We're gonna buy one for MVU someday. We're gonna have another message board, but that's a different issue. But let's get it on the message boards in Swanton and, uh, Highgate, that we need, we need people's help. Now, don't scold them. Thank them for cooperating and following up. Thank you.
I was just gonna say that, that Mr. Collins read my mind. Um, that was gonna be my suggestion next, was to reach out to the select board and ask them for some kind of signage, reminding people as well. It may not stop the masses, but it'll maybe, maybe make people think twice. Um, my second question, I don't know the answer to this personally at my own school, Julie, um, and, and I, I stopped watching the, the updates from the governor, honestly, because they're too stressful as a teacher. Um, and there was just so many constant changes. And then we got to a point where there were no changes. Just bring up, bring, just do it all. Um, so my question is, before Christmas break, uh, we were perfectly within our rights in my school, if I heard a student had been to a Super Bowl party or been to their cousin's house or any of those things, to call the nurse and report that. And there was follow-up. And typically, if that was the case, the kid had to go home. Um, and I, I don't know where we're at with that, honestly. Um, I know that that is still a, it, it is a lesser common practice now at my school, but it's still happening. Um, and if a student is doing something that, you know, they've, not that we've prompted, but that they've shared, because kids share, um, then I certainly feel like it's my job for the other kids in my classroom, um, as well as myself and as well as, you know, uh, the community at large, that I be on top of that, if it's something that comes to my attention. In the same way that I'm, you know, a mandated, mandated reporter for other things, this feels as important. So I'm just wondering what the teacher's ability is at, um, reaching out to the nursing staff and then, you know, repercussions?
Well, unfortunately, we did have some, not that we were asking, but if things came to our attention, we could react to that. Um, they created a memo, um, early in January that said, we cannot, we can no longer ask and we can no longer exclude students. And if somebody in another school is still sort of doing, I don't want to get anybody, you know, but last Thursday, some, a superintendent asked Dan French that, we meet with him every week. And he emphatically said that we do not have the right to exclude a student based on their family's decisions or personal behavior. And so, uh, we just sort of said, okay, and, you know, but it was, it was in writing, it was very emphatic. We've been directed not to do it. So what we can do is remind people and be very strict with our social distancing, with our mask wearing, with our, with our protocols. So that was unfortunate, but that's above, you know, those are decisions that we're not privy to the why.
Lauren, I would say that there's more communication about families that have traveled out of state, but the, like, the multi-household gathering that is like, like Julie's, that has just kind of disappeared from inquiry for the most part, because that, that lessened and all of those things after the holidays. Certainly, if a kid came in on a Monday and said he spent the weekend in New York, we just, we would casually have the teacher reach out. And, um, in the rare cases that that happens right now, they don't realize they should have quarantined and, and kind of rectified that. But we're not seeing a lot of kids coming in, having travels. I, I'm just not seeing that like I did in the fall. Some, yeah, February break is coming up, that could be different.
It looks like Kristin has her hand up. Or am I saying your name wrong this whole time? It's Kirsten? Awesome. Sorry. Um, I'm sorry. Uh, and I was just saying that I, it sounds like my next step is Dan French then, because that makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. If we're supposed to quarantine as people who don't work in a school, if we've done any of those things, then it would make sense to me that people who are in our school systems or attending our school systems would also need to do the same thing. Adam and Nick in that phone call.
Luann. Oh. Uh, not seeing other, any other questions or comments? Uh, in that case, uh, we can wrap this up. Uh, thank you very much for everyone coming. The input is incredible. Um, obviously, our, our main goal is our kids, and we always want to do what's best for them. Um, like everyone said, there's a lot of moving parts. We're trying to do the best through a, you know, unprecedented time. So, um, I've lost my agenda. I think the, the only thing was left was basically for adjourn. So unless somebody has something to bring up, uh, we can have a motion to adjourn. Terry. Motion. Okay, Terry's the first. Steve's the second. Any discussion? See none? All those in favor of adjourning at, uh, seven forty, raise your hand. Motion carries nine zero. Thank you very much, everyone, for, uh, joining us tonight. And, uh, hopefully we can figure all this out. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.